The following program is the third Tuesday of the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
All right, welcome everybody. Welcome to tonight's festivities. We have a beautiful night. It's too bad we can't find a nice little park to sit in and do our meetings on nights like this. We do have a couple of public hearings that we have to take care of before we start the council agenda. So we'll begin with those. We have a public hearing and this is for an ordinance amending chapter 8.06, Obstructions and Encroachments. And J-Rod, you are going to explain what that's all about?
Of course. So the council has actually already seen this ordinance, both of the ordinance coming forward here in this public hearing, but we just missed the public hearing. So that was staff's fault. So we just had to republish and bring it back here. But this is relating to, the first one is relating to obstructions and, oh boy, and encroachments in the right of way, specifically adding in some side streets of Main Street. So what had happened is the ordinance really only covered from Main Street from Badger to Granite. And now with the addition of businesses on Jefferson and Union and West Fulton, things like that, they too wanted to have like foldable signs, you know, flower planters, things like that because they are on a zero foot setback as well as the other businesses on Main Street. So looking to just amend that ordinance to include those other side streets and kind of incorporate the whole downtown into that.
Yeah, that sounds great. Did you get any comments, Jared, before we start the?
Have not received any comments on that one, other than positive.
Positive, yeah. Okay. I went a little quick here, but we have attendance from council members except for Dimitri Martin, who has indicated that he's going to be a few minutes late tonight. And of course Larry, Laurie Chestnut is also not in attendance tonight. Otherwise, we have a full, full council tonight. All right, you heard the purpose of the hearing. We're looking for testimony in favor. If you are in favor of this amendment to ordinance number 8.06, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of? All right, hearing none. Any testimony in opposition? Do we have any testimony in opposition? Again, hearing none. I declare this hearing closed at 6:03 PM. We will act on this in our council meeting, which is following this, these two public hearings. Next up, we have a public hearing. This is an ordinance amending chapter 17 of the zoning code. And again, Jared, I'll ask you to explain this to us.
Yeah, so first one that we've talked about involves signage. This one is more about signage. This is pretty well the entire section on signage. Had been working with the plan commission for quite a few months in a row, looking at different pieces of the sign code, talking about, you know, their thoughts on some proposed changes that had come forward from the business community to us, you know, talking through what felt appropriate, what didn't. Came forward or ended up creating this proposed amendment that we feel changes or solves quite a few issues that businesses were seeming to have, you know, trying to make it a little more lenient and allowing some different types of signs, trying to be a little more flexible with those while also still keeping somewhat of a structured ordinance on what was allowed and what's not. So hopefully a good mixture. Again, solved, we think, a few problems. Might not be the last time you see it if times change again, but we hope this should be good for at least a little while.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jared. All right, at this time again, we'll take testimony in favor of the ordinance change to, yeah, amended chapter 17 of the zoning code. If you would like to give testimony in favor, I'll step up to the podium. Again, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of? Hearing none, we'll go to testimony in opposition. Is there any testimony in opposition of this amendment change? Any testimony in opposition? All right, hearing none. I declare this hearing closed at 6:05 PM. Think we can do the council in five minutes? All right, next up. All right, next up, we have our regular city council meeting and I will call this meeting to order. And as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and display.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Barb, it's time for you to get to work here. Would you please read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. So the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a roll, Barb?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Scott Porczatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Cory Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Barb. And you want to start the introductions of the department heads?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Raye, Community and Economics.
Stephanie Rife, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Ozell, Chief of Police.
Thanks, Brian. And of course, we have Josh Warner, who's in the back running our, our radio and TV for us tonight. All right, consent agenda. These are items that we take with one motion and vote on that with that one motion and second it, of course. Unless you see something on the consent agenda that should be moved to the regular agenda, and then we would see those as individual items if you did move them. Anybody like to see anything on the consent agenda, move to the regular agenda? If not, we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dykstra. That we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, regular agenda. We have had some changes just today, so I'm going to lead, let Barb lead you through some deletions actually that we have on the, on the agenda tonight.
All right, so under number seven, non-agenda items and announcements. A number two for the presentation of the Wapaka Country Club, presentation to Wapaka Country Club. That will not be done tonight. And then also under new business, number nine. A license report 1631, that one is also being pulled from the agenda. And then license report number, or under new business, nine G, license report number 1634. The arcade amusement device license for Saucy's on Apple Tree Lane is being pulled as well. So it'll just be the second one for Mous's Art Supply and Studio, just for arcade games, no gambling, games at that premise. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Barb. So again, well, we'll get to it. But so you know that we have those changes. We are doing those changes so that we don't have to look at tabling those, even though we think that both of these are actually going to be, show up again at a future date. So, but not tonight. So with that amended agenda for tonight, regular agenda, we would be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Thanks by Peterson, second by Olson to approve the regular agenda with those amendments. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under non-agenda items and announcements. I guess we're going right to, so as Barb said, we, we are not doing eight, seven, eight, two, but we are doing seven, A1. I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but we have a local business that has been in business. This is their 100th year anniversary. Let the record note that Dimitri Martin is in attendance now. So it's, it's a local business, Wapaka Country Club, that is having their 100th year anniversary. They're celebrating throughout the year. And so we felt that it was important that the city recognizes them with a proclamation. And I actually will read this one. A proclamation to acknowledge and honor the Wapaka Country Club for 100 years. Whereas the Wapaka Country Club was founded in the spring of 1923, when a group of Wapaka businessmen decided to bring the game of golf to the community. And whereas an agreement was drawn up in hopes to get 50 signers to agree to pay $50 each for a share of stock if a golf club was formed. And whereas, as the concept was enthusiastically received and the requisite number of signers secured, a 55 acre tract of land from McNaughton Farm was eyed as a possible site for course. And whereas in 1924, articles of incorporation for the Wapaka Golf Club were filed with the state of Wisconsin, the course had its official opening. A small shed which housed the office in one section and horse and horse pulled more, and another was built. And whereas in 1943, due to World War II, the club went into caretaker status. Dr. Patterson, a member of the club, purchased the property and held it until the end of the war. And whereas in 1947, articles of incorporation for the Wapaka Country Club were filed with the state, the newly formed corporation purchased the course from Dr. Patterson, a share of stock, and the club was set at $200. And whereas a disaster struck in February of 1963, when the clubhouse burned to the ground, two construction firms were engaged to embark on a crash rebuilding project. The new spacious clubhouse, as it exists today, was opened for use on July 15, 1963. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Wapaka, acknowledge the Wapaka Country Club for 100 years of outstanding service provided to the citizens of the City of Wapaka and surrounding area, and is a great community asset. On behalf of the entire community, common council of the City of Wapaka, I declare 2023 as the official Lee Wapaka Country Club year for 100 years of existence and affix the seal of the City of Wapaka to this proclamation on the 18th day of July, 2023. All right, Barb and Aaron, thank you. You did a great job in putting that one together. But thanks. All right. Next up, we actually have a request from older person Colin Dykstra to talk about the Wapaka Chain Skiers. And I know we have a couple individuals in attendance also. So Colin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council members and department heads, thank you. As you all might be aware, I'm sure you are, the Chain Skiers are a show skiing club based here in Wapaka, who are celebrating over 50 years of fantastic ski shows. Tonight, we have two members of the club here. Dan Osman, the president of the club, and John Stern, Sterm, who is also a longtime member of the club. John, who grew up in nearby Manoa, first became a chain skier back in the 90s after working at the Clearwater Harbor and becoming friends with other members who encouraged him to participate in a Learn to Ski event they were hosting. He fell in love with the skiing. And today is working to give that same opportunity he had to get introduced to water skiing to our fellow community members and would like to let us all know some of the recent successes of the club. So if you don't mind, Dan and John, if you come to the podium and let us know what's up, it'd be great.
All right, thanks for letting me speak today. And that was a great story about the Wapaka Country Club, 100 years. I'm happy to also share that the Chain Skiers are over 50 years in the community. So we'll hope to aspire to the country club status and be here for another 50. So that kind of brings me to the, the point tonight. You know, COVID-19, of course, impacted everybody in a fairly harsh way, and our club was no exception. We lost 50% of our membership during those COVID-19 years. And a couple reasons for that, but one of them was that the Vets Home, of course, had to protect its, its residents from the disease. And we had to stop having our shows on Rainbow Lake, and we had to stop having spectators on the hillside. So not having a show in Wapaka, you can imagine, it devastated the membership. We lost half of our members. Fortunately, Bear Lake took us in for a couple of years. And coming out of COVID-19, I'd have to first shout out my first community partnership here would be the Wisconsin Veterans Home at King Comerant Servacious. The staff in the facilities department, security department have been very, very gracious in allowing our team to come back to Wapaka. And we're very proud to have had our first shows this year, you know, coming, coming out of COVID-19. So that great collaboration with the Vets Home has been instrumental in keeping our team here in Wapaka. So that's the first partnership I wanted to talk about. But more relevant to this group here would be the second partnership, which is a new one that we have this year with the City of Wapaka Parks and Rec Department. So having lost half of our members, we brainstormed and we said, gosh, how can we get access to some of these young people to join our club? And we contacted Laura Colbert in Wapaka Parks and Rec and said, hey, we've got a crazy idea here. Should we offer a water skiing activity through Parks and Rec? Because when I, as a father, my son went through all the swimming lessons at South Park, and I remembered what a great organization Parks and Rec is and how many kids are impacted by it. But water skiing is a sport with limited access. It's hard to find a boat. It's hard to get on a lake. It's hard to get access to equipment. It's, it's a challenge. So a lot of people never get access to the sport. Well, with Laura's collaboration and Parks and Rec partnership, we started a water skiing program with the city this year. We've already had one group of kids get through the program. And of the five kids, three of them are now going to be joining the Wapaka Chain Skiers. And we have a second group of kids starting next week. I'll be coaching. And we have another five kids going through that program. So I'm hoping through this, you know, collaboration, we're going to get another seven to eight members this year join our team. So first of all, very, I want to say very much a thank you to Wapaka Parks and Rec for a tremendous partnership, and we'll hope to grow at even bigger heights next year. So thanks, Laura. And finally, I'd like to say, you know, in the, in the spirit of gaining members and growing the sport and access and visibility to the sport, the other area we've been interested in partnering with would be the Wapaka School District. We currently don't have a formal relationship with the school district. So at some point, if anybody in the room today did have some suggestions or ideas or thoughts on how we might engage the, the district with a potential program, we would be open to, to hearing about that.
That's great, John. I think Laura can probably help you with that, that question that you asked, and Aaron probably could also too. So they, they can certainly help you to try and get in there. They've been really good to work with. So I think, and this is a great project. Laura's brought a lot of new ideas to the Parks and Rec. And this is a, I'm glad that you guys brought this forward at this time because it's, it's really worked out. Have you tried the log rolling now too, that Laura?
I saw it on the website. And I was a little envious that I couldn't, didn't have log rolling available when I was growing up. So that's great. Yeah, very creative. Yeah.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Colin, you want to, anything else you want to say?
No, I don't think so. Thank you guys very much. It's really a terrific program. It helps the community.
I appreciate the visibility. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Anytime. All right, next up, we're going into public input. This is for non-agenda items. So if we have anybody, staff, council, or individuals in the audience that would like to speak to us on public input, just go ahead, just step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. And we're giving you three minutes or less to tell us what your, what your thoughts are.
Thank you. My name is Dawn Davis. I live at 207 East Session Street here in Wapaka.
Dawn, could you just pull the microphone down in front of you? Thank you.
Should I do that over?
No, I think we heard it. You're fine.
I purchased my home about a year and a half ago. I don't have anything as exciting as 100 anniversary or voting exercise, but I have a difference in addresses. My address, I was told, is 207 East Session Street, but my street sign says Session Street. I'm wondering if I can't get them both the same.
So...
My mail comes to 207 East Session Street.
Sessions.
Session, singular.
Yeah, well, that's because we have a nice local post office that will find you. Because we don't have a Session Street. We only have Sessions Street.
Okay.
In town. So the local post office, you could contact them, but you're getting your mail from them.
I did contact them when I moved in here over a year ago. And at that time, Angel was the postmaster.
Yeah.
And I told her my street address was Sessions. And she said, I don't care what your street sign said. Your address is 207 East Session Street. So I went with that, but.
Yeah, I think actually, did you talk to Justin? Or Justin, how did, how did you find out about this? Because you warned me ahead of time. That wasn't probably the proper term.
I was tipped off by an older person.
Oh, yeah. Paul, Paul Mayo actually did. And so, did you get a chance to look at our city map?
I did. It is East Sessions with an S at the end, and West Sessions, which is on the other side of the river, with an S at the end. The county GIS shows it with the S. And when you pull up the tax bill, the mailing address and the property address is with an S at the end of Sessions.
And what did you?
And so is our, our road signs, our street name signs have the S on it. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I was, I interrupted you and I'm sorry. So officially, our map does say, what's your, what's your address again, number?
207.
207.
There, I think there's only three houses on, it's a dead end street. There's only three houses that are involved.
Mayor.
It does come up as Sessions Street if you use Google Map.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I just did that. And and if you try to type in Sessions Street. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out a way to help you here. I mean, our map, it's pretty clear that our city map says that the address is Sessions Street. So somehow, I'm sure Google Maps probably used what the post office had. So really, the post office is the place that you need to start.
I, I went there.
Yeah.
He told me to go to the courthouse.
Well, there, there should be, well, the courthouse is correct. So it doesn't help you to go to the courthouse. You're going to be chasing your tail if you do that. Because I know, we're, we're trying to help you. So understand that we are trying to help you, and we will try to help you. We're not going to change the street name from Sessions, Sessions to Session.
Should I just change my, all my billing to Sessions Street then?
Sessions Street.
I won't have an issue with that if I call the water company or?
Well, they probably already have you as Sessions Street.
I get the bill at Session.
Your water bill?
Yep.
Okay. Well, you should contact everybody that has Session on there and change it to Sessions Street. And there is a form at the post office that you can fill out if your address is incorrect.
Okay.
It takes a while though. You know, I think it's got to go by horse and pony to Washington DC and then
Okay.
And then it gets fixed that way. But there is, there is a way to help you.
Okay.
So it, so I'm guessing, again, I'm guessing that Google Maps is just basing it on the US Postal Service.
Okay. Either way, it's fine. I just like it to be the same.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and quite honestly, if you came in here with a petition that said everybody on your street is not getting their mail because it's, because it, your address is Sessions Street and you have Sessions on the sign, then we would have something to do. But you're the only one that's come to us.
Okay. I get my mail, but my packages are always like a day or two late. And that might be Google with the.
Yeah. So are you, without digging too deep, are we talking like Amazon or UPS or, or US Postal Service?
Probably Amazon. Well, at first, the US Post Office dropped my mail at 207 Division Street. So it's been kind of interesting.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, I'll do my best to get my address changed to Sessions.
Keep us informed.
Okay, I will.
Like to know.
Thank you for hearing me.
Mayor. There is one sign. There's four Sessions Street signs. One of them is singular. It's on Session and Washington.
So we need to fix that one then.
We'll fix it.
That's across the river though, from where she lives.
The other side, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm on.
Yeah. Well, my son also lives on Sessions Street, so I'm going to ask him too. But he lives on West Sessions, so, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll find out. But yeah, good luck. Any other public input?
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Scotty?
I'd just like to, since our last meeting, we've had a wonderful addition to officially open in our city, being the Splash Pad playground. And I just want to give some public thanks and recognition to our fine staff, past and present, for bringing that great project to fruition, because I've had nothing but great compliments, including my own six-year-old granddaughter, about how great it is. And I know we've had a past Parker Rec Director Andrew Whitman, who got the ball rolling. And then Laura came in and took up the mantle and brought it to the finish line. So it's been very well received, and I'd want everybody to know that, great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. And keeping in theme, and I always try to make sure that people understand that, keeping in theme with the, with that park, Swan Park, you know, that's a shared, we get lots of grants and donations where at least half of the money, anytime we do there, is not taxpayer money, but it's usually either grant money or donations that we get. And so we get a great product for, for our taxpayers at, at a little, very little bang for the dollar.
It was a great job.
Yeah, thanks. Cory, go ahead.
I, I would just like to piggyback off of what Scott is saying. So we had a, our eight, nine, and 10 U baseball tournament at Swan Park this past weekend. And we had hundreds, if not thousands, of people there over the weekend. I think we had over 30 teams playing. And the amount of feedback that I received, mainly when I was working the grill, from people that were from out of town is how awesome Swan Park is. And that, especially with the splash pad and this playground equipment, everything was packed all weekend. So it, it was a really, really great moment for the community to be able to showcase some of these facilities that, in talking to people that, that are coming from other communities, they don't have these things. And that's a credit to the community and to, you know, everybody in this room, past and present, that, that has voted to continue to keep those things going. So a lot of great feedback. And we've probably had our most successful baseball tournament. Our 10 U team took second, our 9 U team took first, and our 8 U team won a very thrilling comfort behind victory, an extra inning. So to finish third. So it was just a great weekend for the community.
Must have been coaching in that 8 U, huh?
I was shouting from the stands. Aaron was coaching. He can tell you more about that.
All right, sounds great. Thank you. I always like to hear good news about what's going on in the city. So if you have anything to share, you know, certainly open up. Appreciate that. I know we're going to talk a little bit about strategic plan a little bit later, but going on from public input, we have community reports and department head reports. And I felt that you probably got enough of the department head reports at the strategic plan last week. And so they told you what they did last week, last year, and they are telling you what they're doing this year too. So we're going to skip it for this month. It's still on the agenda, obviously, for future second meetings, but we're going to skip that. So if anybody has any questions or comments, looks like most of this you can find on page 70 through 40, page page forty of your packet. If you have any questions, go directly to the, the members of the department heads and so on. But Justin, the other big project we have going, obviously, is the, the Public Works Facility. You want to just give a brief update on that?
Schedule is going as planned right now. Still targeting a early spring occupancy. It seems to be going slow right now because they're just doing blockwork and it, it's a slow process. But everything is right on order. No major issues so far to date, and we're, we're still going on it. We're clipping away, so.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks. Any questions on that? It's great to see it go up. All right. Doesn't look like Marcy's here. She was going to represent the Wopac Community Arts Board. So in Marcy fashion, she'll be here in a few minutes. Under unfinished business, we have ordinance number zero nine twenty twenty-three. This is a rezoning of Kristen Kane Ashby Etoll, eleven twenty-six Ware Street. And this is actually, again, an ordinance and a second reading, so we're going to vote on that tonight. And we'll just have Jared, just give us a brief description of this and whether he heard any for or against on this ordinance.
I had not heard any for or against from the public. The short of this one, it is a triple zone parcel, and they would like to make it a single zoned residential parcel so that they can continue to add to that already residential structure. They wanted to do chickens, and they wanted to do a detached garage. So just cleaning up the zoning so that they can carry on with what they would like to do for their projects.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that? We're looking for a motion to approve this ordinance. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Velik or second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number zero nine twenty twenty-three. This is a rezoning of eleven twenty-six Ware Street. Any discussion? Barbara, call and roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velik.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dmitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Jared. Next up, I guess you're still up here. So we're skipping nine A, obviously, we, we deleted that from the agenda for tonight. So we're, we're on nine B. And this is a first reading of ordinance number zero six twenty twenty-three on amendment to chapter eight point zero six, parent two, parent F, obstructions and encroachments. Here.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So these are the two you heard in the public hearings. Oh six twenty-three, these next two are the ones you've heard in the public hearings. This current one, ordinance number oh six twenty-three, is looking at the encroachments. So again, the ordinance just called out Main Street from Badger to Granite. We're looking to just add those Main Street, side streets in so that they can have foldable signs. You know, if they wanted to put chairs and things out, they certainly could, as long as there's an uncumbered space of four feet. So just trying to include those side streets and continue to make our downtown vibrant.
Thanks. And we did have a public hearing before this meeting, and we didn't have anybody speak either for or against. Although Jared, it indicated that we had had a lot of good discussion on, on what this, what it, how nice it is to be able to do that. Again, this is just the first reading. Anybody have any comments? We'll see this at our next meeting, which is in August, August first. Okay, August first. All right, next is also a first reading. This is ordinance number zero seven twenty twenty-three. Creation of chapters seventeen point three one six mural and amendment of chapters seven point five signs. Signs. Jared.
Signs, signs, and more signs. So this one is specifically looking at murals as well as all of the signage changes. So previously, we didn't have any specific call out for murals, and we just considered them wall signs, which causes a lot of headaches for the downtown businesses, specifically that had murals put up in their back alleyways, and now would like to do wall signage. So just trying to clean that up, you know, should be encouraging murals, you know. A lot of touristy places, Ashland, I know Oshkosh does it, you know, Wausau, a lot of, a lot of, I just, general communities have murals and encourage them as they promote the tourism. They create vibrancy, so. Looking to create just a separate section for murals. And then throughout the signage chapter, just trying to do a, a little bit of cleanup, clarification for things like window signs, flags, some definitions for animated flashing signs. And then just trying to combine some of the districts that are very similar and really had very miniscule differences, just to try to clean it up, make it a little more readable. And then also clarify some language in those sections, such as per sign or per building, per property, just to really clear things up. So that's really the gist of it.
All right. Jared, anybody have any questions? Go ahead. Henry. I just wanted to comment. I mean, this is probably one of the most controversial parts of a zoning code, usually. And Jared, I think the Plan Commission reviewed this like three different times.
Actually, to be honest.
It came back a couple of times.
It's probably double that.
Yeah, the, the committee, the Plan Commission really gave it some thought, so feel like it's in pretty good, good shape. Yeah, thanks, Henry. This is always an interesting topic, got city planning and a city council. So, yeah, good to get to this part. So that's the first reading. We'll see, again, see that on August first. All right, Jared, you're done for now. We're going to go to D, nine D, WPS easement request. And Justin, you're on top of that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My memo, which kind of just summarizes what's included, is on page one forty-two. This is an easement from WPS for our new electrical service at the Public Works Facility at Hoppercorn Field. There is a letter included from WPS detailing that and also the easement agreement, which the actual one is in the clerk's office. So upon approval tonight, you get signature, send it in. And then finally, there is a temporary exhibit at the end showing you approximately where the easement will be located. So if you can get there, Aaron, a couple more pages. This is basically the front lawn of the new facility. We may have some sidewalk and a driveway in that area, but overall, it does not affect our building footprint at all. It is temporary because this is an approximate location. Once they install the actual service line, this will get cleaned up and submitted a, an official final one, which will then be recorded. So given that it is a property agreement, it needs council approval. So I'm looking for approval as such for this easement agreement with WPS.
All right. Pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions? Anybody that'd like to make a motion to approve this easement request?
Move to approve easement. Second.
Motion by Pachatsky, second by Nagel, that we approve the document number thirty-three zero zero nine nine six one. It's an easement agreement with Wisconsin Public Service. Any discussion? Barbara, call and roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Dmitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velik.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, license report sixteen thirty-two. This is a Class B Fermented Malt Beverage License. And you can find that on page one forty-eight. There's one, it's actually a club, Wopac Curling Club, that's on there and is requesting that. Again, pretty straightforward, just need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion by Dykstra, second by Velik, that we approve license report sixteen thirty-two. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. License report sixteen thirty-three, which is on page one forty-nine. These are all bartenders or operators within the city of Wopac that are, will be working at various licensed places. You can see in yellow, of course, we have all license pending, background checks, and payments of any monies owed to the city. Most of those have probably already been checked, if not all of them. And obviously, Barb will not give them their operator's license until that's successful. So again, pretty straightforward, looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve license report sixteen thirty-three. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right. And then license report number sixteen thirty-four. As Barbara indicated, the first one on there, Saucy's, is being tabled for the time being. So we just have the one, Mouse's Art Supply and Studio, which is at one fifteen West Walton Street. And we do have to license amusement devices, even if they're, you know, pinball machines or anything like that. And so that's, that's our requirement. And so that's why Mouse's Art Supplies is in here. So you're only approving, under license report number sixteen thirty-four, if you approve, you're only approving Mouse's Art Supply and Studio. Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second by, or motion by Martin. Second by Peterson, that we approve license report number sixteen thirty-four. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right. So this is something that we wanted to get to at our strategic planning, and we didn't. And that's okay, really, quite honestly, because this is something that is, uh, something that should be on its own anyways. And this is the, talking about our, our audit and, you know, impacts that could happen to shared revenue this year. And so Aaron's got a presentation for you. Remember that this is not a budget discussion. This is just to really talk about our annual budget. And then he wants to add to it, just to talk about the new shared revenue bill. So Aaron, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, if you could give me just one second. Bears are down three, nothing.
Where are they, Philly?
Yeah. Phillies are hot.
Well, we swept the Reds. I was going to. Okay, we can see this.
Thanks again, Mayor. And I also want to thank city council for all their time last week. I got to thank department heads this morning, six hours of largely the first three to four hours of, of hearing staff talk and update you. Thank you for being patient during that. And then I, I think we all felt like we had really, really good discussion and conversation for that latter half of the second day. So thank you all for the participation. This is really the same slideshow that we were working off of on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, just continued as it was supposed to be last week. You guys see, this was supposed to be the day two outline, exercise and prioritization of action items. We did that, and I plan to bring back a draft, hopefully August fifteenth, and have a discussion on that. And then hopefully pass something in sometime in September. The other thing we're going to do is review the summary of the two thousand twenty-two draft audit, which is what we're going to do right now. And then we're going to get into expected impacts of the new shared revenue bill, which we've talked about briefly, haven't really got into details all that much. So wanted to talk about that. Wanted to remind you, as we get into the two thousand twenty-two draft audit summary, this is not intended to be an audit report. This is to hit the highlights and the things that jumped out and were important to me as a city administrator and, and my duties. You will see a full audit report done by our auditors, and they will come and present that at city council at a later date very soon. Cash balances. So the way I kind of wanted to approach this was to look at cash balances and what are the trends in that? So cash, and if you talk to our auditors, you know, cash is king, so they say. And it's important where we stand. And I can tell you that we do stand pretty healthy in most all of our funds, and we're going to go through a lot of them, with the exception of probably TIF eight, which you guys have known for quite some time. We did have a trend there that is probably a little eye-popping in our general fund, but I will explain, kind of, there are reasons for that. And there is good reason to believe that we are okay moving forward as we look at where we're at through two thousand twenty-three. So general fund, our cash on hand or cat fund balance, you can see, is at about one point nine seven four million. Our policy at the city requires the city to be between twenty and twenty-five percent. And we are in that formatted weird, I apologize. We are currently at twenty-four point seven percent. So we are at the very top end of that policy. And that does include the second bullet point there. So there was a decrease in the general fund balance of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from year end two, twenty twenty-one to year end twenty twenty-two. The major part of that, the big chunk, was all tied to retirement-related payouts through sick leave and vacation from longstanding employees that have been here for a long time. And those payouts happened in the last two weeks of December. Those payouts totaled one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. The city, just as a reminder, kind of what we've done, now, we've always looked at these payouts, sick payouts and retirements as unfunded liabilities, and that is what happens when we have these unfunded liabilities. They're not budgeted for. What we do to recoup that cost is we have vacancies in those positions. And that is what we have done. So we expect to recoup most of that cost, if not all of it, through vacancies in positions in the police department, the public works department, and in the clerk's department. It was the facility superintendent, police captain, and the clerk that those were tied to. On top of that, there were some revenues that came in less than expected in our strategic planning sessions. We talked and we showed some graphs on some of those revenues tied to building inspect, or building fees, permit fees, that were down compared to past actuals. Those are trending at a higher level in two thousand twenty-three. PD fines and forfeitures were off pace by twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-two. I think we lost a high-volume ticket person through turnover, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. We are closely monitoring that in two thousand twenty-three, and that is also trending what we had budgeted for, for two thousand twenty-three. And then our water utility tax equivalent was off of recent trends. And that is due to a revenue number that we had in the budget that was not exactly what it probably should have been. That was corrected in the two thousand twenty-three budget. And the, the reason it wasn't what it should have been is that for many years, the city budgeted a revenue of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars for both the sewer tax equivalent and the water tax equivalent. The sewer can remain at two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but the water cannot because the PSC just determines that you have to count, you have to take in consideration depreciation. So that number went all the way down to about one hundred and seventy-five thousand as a revenue. So that's a, a big chunk of change there, too. Again, that was accounted for in this two thousand twenty-three budget. One of the things that Mayor asked me when we had a conversation initially about this is, hey, do we need to make any budget adjustments moving forward to the rest of this year to make sure that that trend's not, that that is not a trend? And as we keep an eye on things, the answer to that at this point is no. But that is why we are watching. And as we keep an eye on things, the answer to that at this point is no, but that is why we are watching everything closely. The other thing I'll say, and another reason as to why the answer to that is likely no, is because you remember the closure of those TIFs allowed for a one-time TIF adjustment, which allows us to go higher than the net new construction number. So for two thousand twenty-three, that was like a four point five percent, which was, which helps with that quite a bit as well. Sorry, I'm getting buzzed on my watch. So next, that will come back to kind of general fund impacts when we get to the shared revenue as well. But another major, so these are our major governmental funds. Our debt service fund balance, there is no policy on this. Actually, to be honest with you, we can have zero. Many people have very close to zero, or many municipalities have close to zero. We had an increase in that fund balance of almost a million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So the debt service fund balance can only be used for one thing, and that is to pay off our debt payments. It can't be used for anything else. So the reason that we added nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars is because some of the TIFs that closed owed the debt service fund. So upon closure, those paid the debt service fund back, and now we have that larger balance in there. The reason that that's a good thing is that we can use some of fund balance to, in essence, buy down the amount that we levy citizens for debt service-related payments on a year-to-year basis. Now, that doesn't go on forever, so we'll have that conversation in a budget workshop. But it's very, it's a very good thing to have a fund balance that is that high and allows us to have some conversations regarding that. Capital improvements, this only goes to pay for capital projects. And this is specifically our GO, our general obligation, capital improvements, not in the utilities. And that's seven point nine million, that's tied to capital improvements. So you can kind of look at that as it's all tied up in what we have in our plan. So kind of an in-out. Obviously, the public works facility is a big part of that. One thing I do want to mention, though, is Steph has been working with our financial advisors. And there are some CDs right now that we can get four point five to five percent on guaranteed. And when you're sitting on an amount of money that's in the seven point some million, that's, that's pretty good. TIF four, TIF four, two point one million increase, that TIF four increased about forty-three thousand dollars, which was really encouraging to me, because TIF four is paying off or helping, it's a donor to TIF eight, and helping pay that debt down. But it's also was, in the last couple of years, a donor to TIF ten. So TIF ten no longer is going to have that revenue coming in from TIF four, because the expenditure period's over, the business incentive program's over. But even with that being the last couple of years, it still had a surplus of forty-three thousand dollars. So we can have conversations when we get into our TIF workshop about how aggressive we want to be with TIF eight. And then TIF eight, the negative seven point five million, right now, that's scheduled to be paid off in two thousand thirty-two or two thousand thirty-three. One notable thing is TIF eight should be paying off the water utility between now and then, a minimum of two million dollars. So we're going to talk about some things with the water utility. And the water utility has not seen revenues from TIF eight to date. It will start to see revenues from TIF eight between now and, and that closure date. Justin, looks like you. Out in the East Gate area.
That's the new one?
No, it's, it's the older.
The airport.
Go ahead, Henry.
Water Fund covered a lot of the debt those few years and today. When we do our rate case with PSC, will that be viewed as income from TIF eight? Or is it sort of a past obligation that can't really be considered into our rates?
It's, it's.
Did I say that right? If it's income, it's like one-time income, it's not a recurring.
It's not, though, it's a liability on the balance sheet, so. It won't count towards our rate.
Okay.
Yep.
Right. All right, thanks. So these are our non-major governmental funds. And as I said before, we have a lot of them. Inland lakes, city council, just a reminder, this is something that's levied for each year, ten thousand dollars. Right now, we have a fund balance of fifteen thousand dollars. It goes for environmental sound practices for Mearon Shado Lake. And now we started our inland waters committee, and that may expand to some other waterways within the city limits and within the district. Our transit systems at twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, all of these really, at the end of, or a lot of them, could be at zero. And you could make an argument that that's, you know, that would be an okay or good thing, or what the intent was. I will say the transit system, it's good to have some cushion in there, because you never really exactly know where those state and federal funds will come from or how much they'll be. So if it does happen to be not as much as we were hoping, we have a little bit of a cushion in there to help cover that. And as a reminder, we do budget ten thousand dollars out of our general fund to go into the transit fund each year. Revolving loan funds, this is something actually that we just, it's a holding account for cap services. Cap Services administers all of that. And the city actually has very little operational responsibilities with that. Adult recreation, this is also an enterprise fund. It's meant to just be self-sustaining, and it is self-sustaining. Airport, airport was self-sustaining this year twofold, in large part because of increased fuel sales, but also in large part due to a couple rescue bill monies that helped out. So I would anticipate that the general fund will need to certainly help transfer money to the airport in two thousand and twenty-three, just not as much as we're accustomed to, which is good, very good. Donations and grants, ninety-three thousand dollars. Library, forty-four thousand dollars. Youth programs, seventeen thousand, again, self-sustaining funds for the most part. South Park Trust, at the end of two thousand twenty-two, had eighty-eight thousand, but actually, some of that, it was ninety-six shortly before that. Some of it was, went to splash pad expenses, and the rest of it is committed to splash pad expenses. So that really, in all essence, you can count as zero. CDBG grant fund also is zero. Stephanie worked hard on closing that out with the Department of Administration. That was an in-and-out fund with a grant that we got for utility assistance and housing assistance. TIF districts, so our non-major governmental TIF districts, because they're not big enough yet, it would be TIF ten, eleven, and twelve. Of course, TIF tens are downtown TIF, and then TIF eleven and twelve are our two new ones. Eleven would be River North area or the Business and Industrial Park. And then the TIF twelve is Churchill. So this is not uncommon. You see, we have a negative sixteen thousand dollars, and in the first year of a TIF, we typically have a few thousand dollars that you go into the hole, because that increment won't come until that first year that it rolls over. I can tell you, there's been projects that have not, that do not have TIF agreements tied to them, meaning we don't have any incentive we're giving out that will raise the increment in TIF eleven specifically. And I would anticipate that increment at year's end would be more than thirty thousand dollars, and that's conservative. Local fiscal recovery fund, that was the ARPA money, so we've committed all of that. So that is, was an in-and-out, and that is at zero. And then the cemetery perpetual care fund, at the end of two thousand twenty-two, was at one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. But if you've been, you've heard us talk about it, all the roads got redone in the cemetery, and that was done through this fund. So that was about, Justin, was that seventy, about seventy thousand dollars?
Yep.
So you could subtract about seventy thousand dollars from that cemetery perpetual care fund because of that project. And that's what the purpose of that fund is. Our utilities, accounting for utilities is done a little different way. So the really big number you see there is basically all assets. And the unrestricted cash for our water utility is at about seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Talking with our auditor, that's a healthy unrestricted cash balance for that utility and what it does. However, our coverage this year, as you can see, our change in net position was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. But our coverage didn't meet our ratio, and you heard me talk about that, I believe, at least in the last week or two. So we'll have to take a look at that. I would expect that we will bring forward a recommendation to do a simplified rate case for the second year in a row. We had about four to five years off, we had no rate case increases. This does not take into account the last rate increase, so, you know, we did have that rate increase in February, which was a four percent. And then the next simplified rate case would be eight percent, and we have no control over that. The PSC just determines what that number is, and they've set it at eight percent because of inflationary purposes. So it would be our auditor's recommendation that we engage in a simplified rate case again. Our sewer utility, unrestricted cash, one point eight eight one million. Change in net position of one point five three, and that ratio was very healthy, more than two times the amount of what is required per our policy. We are not anticipating any rate changes or in the sewer utility in the near future. And then we'll pack online is our other utility, our telecommunications utility. And Josh and his crew and Ralph have been doing a great job, and that continues to add people, customers. And they had a change in net position of forty-six thousand dollars approximately in two thousand twenty-two, and their cash balance is about two hundred and seventy thousand. That's a little overview of our utilities. So every time an audit gets done, of course, they have findings, or they hopefully don't. We did have one finding this year, our material weakness. This is right out of the, the, the report, and Jay will talk about it as well. So I'll just read it. Material audit adjustments were required to adjust several account balances. Financial reports generated by the accounting system may not have provided an accurate reflection of the city's financial position or activities at a given time. The city should have, have monthly and year-end closing processes to ensure the records are correct, reliable, and properly reconciled. Management should then review the financial information on a timely basis. So I can tell you that that has been rectified. This was our only audit finding. Stephanie has worked very, very hard with Kate to make sure that everything was caught up. We had a long period of time there where we had a finance director that was part-time at best, twenty hours a week. And there was some things that had gotten behind on, and that has been caught up since that time. I'm happy to report that bank reconciliations are checked by myself, Steph, Kate, along with weekly check runs. So processes have been put in place, and everything is up to date as we sit here today. Significant efficiencies, we had none for that in the audit findings. Yeah, yeah, pretty detailed there. So any questions on any of that? So that's a summary and an overview of the audit. Again, you'll hear from Jay as well. Okay, if you have questions that you think of later, happy to go through anything with you individually at any time. Our shared revenue bill, which we've talked a lot about, shared revenue bill summary. So the state has passed a bill, Act twelve, which will increase county and municipal aid payments by twenty percent. What does that mean for the city of Opaaca? The city of Opaaca's two thousand twenty-two county and municipal aid payment was eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Technically, it says that we're going to get a twenty percent increase from what our payment was in two thousand twelve. Just so happens, our payment in two thousand twelve was the exact same amount, I think maybe minus a hundred bucks or something. So we get twenty percent on top of that. So that really means we'll receive an additional one hundred and seventy-four thousand for total county and municipal aid payments, which means that our total will be about one point oh four five million. Now, that is, just to, so you understand the mechanics of this, it's going to be delivered in two different payments. So the eight seventy-one will remain as our shared revenue payment. And that will be flat for the foreseeable future. And then we're going to receive a supplemental payment of the one seventy-four. And the reason it's important to understand those mechanics, I'll explain in a second, because some of the changes in how this is structured will only be for that supplemental payment of one seventy-four, not for the eight seventy-one.
Is that an ongoing payment or just this year? Is there any indication of that?
So, yeah, it's ongoing, and I'm just going to go right into what I was, what I'm going to go into, because it's a good, good segue based off your question. It's an ongoing payment, Paul, that will increase now with the sales tax increase percentage. So shared revenue has been flatlined or actually decreased over time. This new payment will increase with the sales tax, which typically increases about three to five percent on average per year. It has been more than that lately, but that will increase with the sales tax.
So the rate is maintaining, it's just they're getting more revenue? Is that correct?
Correct. So there's some noteworthy rules tied to this sup, this new supplemental payment. To qualify, municipalities must, at a minimum, maintain current funding for law enforcement, fire protection, emergency medical services, emergency response communications, public works, courts, and transportation. That comes right out of the statute or the bill. So what that means is if a community decides to cut any of these after receiving the payment, they will be penalized either through decreased expenditure restraint or potentially decreased supplemental payments in the future. So this kind of, Paul, to your question, represents, and this is actually an old slide that the League of Wisconsin municipalities have been using throughout this advocacy effort. So you can kind of, that yellow line may represent what shared revenue has been. So, and that, that's exactly what that eight seventy-one will remain. It'll remain flat, just like that yellow line. And then our, our new supplemental payment will go, that's the trend of the sales tax over time and what it's done in the state of Wisconsin. So that will move along that line. This is a little more detailed information on what the sales tax has done in the state of Wisconsin since two thousand, or I guess two thousand. I bring this up because you can see that it doesn't go up every single year. There were two years in there where it actually decreased by four, about four and a half and three and a half percent. Every other year, it increased. And again, you already heard me say that that average increases anywhere from three to five percent. So this is a great step. I think we're all happy that county municipal aid payments were going to go up. We're super happy that the legislator and the governor's office got together and came to an agreement. But it's certainly not a silver bullet, and I want to explain that. So, you know, when you hear twenty percent, okay, governments, municipal governments are getting twenty percent more of shared revenue. And I think there can be a misconception that, okay, well, twenty percent more of revenue. Well, shared revenue is not our only revenue source. It is, in fact, a pretty small portion of our revenue source. Obviously, most of it comes from property taxes. So if you equate the one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to what is that percentage against our funds that help our general fund operate? It's, it equates to three point five percent. So we're getting about three point five percent more revenue for our total operations. So when you put it like that, it's not quite as exciting. For perspective, here's some past city payments of shared revenue or this county municipal aid payment. So you can see, in all of those years, we actually received more than we are going to receive even with the supplemental payment in two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand three, and then it really started to go down after that. Another comparison, this is another comparison, and certainly not advocating, I'm happy for New London, happy for Clintonville. But we are getting more, but I do think that the formula is in dire need of getting looked at. I think it's a broken formula that's old and does not serve. I think it's a broken formula that's old and, uh, does not serve the city well, the city of Opaaca well. New London, fairly similar, uh, community. I would say our most, maybe our most comparable community. You can see what their payment is. Remember, ours is eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Theirs in two thousand twenty-two was more than a million dollars more than ours, at one point nine seven three. And their new money, because it's all based off of a percentage of their last, uh, money, is three hundred ninety-four, almost four hundred thousand dollars. That would, that's just based off the twenty percent that we were kind of expecting. Uh, Clintonville's, which is, Clintonville's is smaller than us, just two county comparisons here. Their payment, uh, in two thousand twenty-two is one point one eight nine, again, more than us. And Clintonville's expected new money is, again, more than the city of Opaaca, uh, at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, you know, one thing that was brought up in this conversation is, is fixing the formula. And I understand, you know, there's not a, necessarily maybe a political appetite to, to change a formula that's been in place for decades, um, because it, you know, I think the argument is it creates winners and losers, right? I would argue that this also creates winners and losers. Um, and unfortunately, I think the city, uh, I, I wouldn't call us necessarily a winner when compared to other communities. We talk about employee retention, attraction, um, all of those things, and all the challenges we have with inflation. Um, we're a little behind the eight ball compared to, to others, uh, in our county. So another, another piece of this is innovation grants. Um, so the new shared revenue bill, this is going to be approximate, but the total money is about one point four billion. They're giving local control, they're taking about three hundred to four hundred million, and they're giving that to local control, which is the extra money that we get. And then they're saying the rest of it is going to be tied up in these innovation grants. So one to one point one billion, approximately, will be tied up in these. So counties and municipalities may apply for these through the DNR, or the DOR, I'm sorry. Um, and it, one of the stipulations is, is that you basically are going to work with nonprofit organizations, other municipalities, counties, private entities, in collaborative type agreements, or shared services, maybe, type agreements. Uh, and it has to project a savings of at least ten percent in order to qualify for this money. Um, eligible services on there, you can see most everything. It's probably easier to note what's not on there, and I actually just noticed this last week, and I noticed library services is not on there. I could not tell you why that is, um, but that is straight from Act Twelve. Uh, so I'll have to try to get more information on that. So I think, in summary, you know, I think I want to keep in a couple of things in mind. I think this is, this is still a step in the right direction, right? I think our legislators are, are working hard. They, they're getting told, you know, they, everyone needs something, right? And I think we're, we're certainly thankful for the support in the bill in general. Um, I actually called our legislators last week to, to thank them and remind them that we do appreciate their work. Also want to remind them that there's still work to be done. It's not perfect. Um, and the city of Opaaca would certainly benefit from additional conversations around what we talked about here briefly tonight. Um, and then I, the only other thing is, you know, we're going to get to work, right? We have what we have. We can control what we can control. Um, and we will get to work in our budget workshops, and there's the calendar. I'll put it out in the next, uh, city newsletter, but right now, we're looking at September fifth, having the capital improvement workshop, September nineteenth, personnel, uh, October third, TIF and transit, October seventeenth, first look at the draft budget. We'll have a gap in there, November seventh. We may not have a workshop unless it's needed, and we will have one if needed, and then we'll plan to hopefully adopt the budget on November twenty-first. That also leaves us an extra week or two in December, um, if we, if we need it. So that's kind of what we're looking at for the, the next couple of months. Um, and this is, you know, probably not relevant tonight. It would have been great on, you know, Wednesday. So, uh, that's all I got. Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Henry.
Could, uh, Eric, could you go back to the budget schedule? The utilities, I'm, I'm thinking your staff is thinking you're going to really hit the utilities in the capital improvement workshops. Um, or is our new utility group going to deal with the budgets? Uh, they're, they're not in there.
Yeah.
Will you be doing utilities?
Great question. So I think we'll hit utilities and capital improvement and personnel, and first look at draft budget, which would include the utilities. Um, you know, to be honest, we haven't had a separate utility workshop in the last couple of years. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to it. I think if we, if that's what council wanted, we could certainly add one to the schedule.
Because I think it may, the ma- major stuff is the projects and the utilities. The rates are going to be the rates. You got your costs, personnel. It's all going to fall in, okay, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that new committee, you're right, will be tasked with the, uh, general expenses. Bring it forward to council during the, let's hope they do. See how that works.
All right, Scott.
Is, are our transportation aids included in that shared, state-stored revenue number? Or is that a separate?
Separate.
It is.
Yep.
Are those going up, or are those static, or does that?
You know, that is to be determined. I actually have heard that they may go up slightly, um, but I can't, I can't say for sure.
Okay.
And we'll have to wait for final numbers in the, usually October, mid-October is when those kind of.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or comments?
So, um, we have a grant writer who's done a great job, and we have the innovation grants. Is there anything that we've currently are looking at? Or, or is that just so new that, that we're still reading the fine print?
Good question.
Or that Greg is, I should say.
So I think what's awesome is that we are as well-positioned to take advantage of those integration, innovation grants as any municipality our size, because we have a grant writer, and that's very rare for a municipality our size. Um, so the importance of that position just got more important with this program. Um, so that, this is maybe something you'll hear in the capital project workshop. Uh, there is a service out of UW-Madison that, uh, actually does kind of like a lot of planning things for pennies on the dollar, although it's still not free by any means. Um, you know, one of our options that I would like to look at, and I'm kind of looking into now, is we could work with UW-Madison and future planning students and engineering and all of that, and, um, have really professional plans done. We could take six topics and say, here's our six ideas that we think maybe are the most, the, the highest potential for collaborative agreements that would qualify for this innovation fund. And we could say, okay, these work, these don't. Let's try to go execute them. Um, so that's an, that, that's an idea for, for potential capital.
Eric, go back to that slide that shows what that innovation grant is. Look at, just touch on that, and what a great job the city of Opaac has done in the surrounding communities.
Hmm, yeah. So, and this is, yeah, so the city of Opaac has been probably a good example of what they are wanting to see across the state, which, again, doesn't help us right now. Uh, they will only reward new efforts. So an example may be the Opaacary Fire District. That's a shared services agreement, um, that would have qualified for this, but now, are there things we can expand on within the fire district? Maybe, you know, we got to look at that. Um, the park and rec agreement with the townships, fantastic example, uh, of a shared services type agreement that would have probably qualified for this. Um, there's, uh, the recycling center, the, you know, there's a number of things that have been done at the city over the course of many years, um, that are in place that, that unfortunately won't give us money as the program is written now, but it proves that we can do it, and we've proven we can do it and work with our neighbors, and, uh, and hopefully we can be successful in doing that in the future.
Do you know how much money is in the budget for those grants?
Um, well, yeah, the total is about that one, one point one billion. No community can receive more than ten million a year.
Okay.
That's the, that's the cap, but how many, how many communities are going to receive ten million? I, I don't know. I, maybe none, or, I don't know. But I, I, I'll be attending a workshop in late August and hopefully have more detail on that. Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Aaron, thanks. Good job. Sorry for you threw that in. When can we expect, uh, our auditors to be here? Just give us a presentation.
Well, I'm hoping for, uh, well, neither going to be, second meeting in August or the first meeting in September, because of his schedule. We, we could have him already, but his schedule is not alone.
Okay. It'll be before we start the budget process, so.
Yeah, yes.
Right. Seems like that's something we should know. Ahead of time. Any other comments on presentation? I don't know if Barbara was timing you or not, but you were at exactly twenty-seven minutes. So you made it under the thirty. All right, uh, communications, recommendations of the mayor. Uh, we had a card going around. Have we seen it come back yet? Okay, thank you, Peter. If you get that to Barbara, please. Appreciate it. Uh, did I give you the envelope for that too, here? For that, too. Um, don't forget, uh, city planning is tomorrow. It's been, uh, you know, it's usually the first, uh, Wednesday of the month, and we, we changed that because of the Fourth of July. So we changed it to tomorrow. Normally, it's at five fifteen PM, but there's a library meeting tomorrow in the council chambers. So we will be at six fifteen or whenever library gets finished, whichever comes. What's that?
Will be done before then.
All right, so it'll be six fifteen. So anybody who wants to attend, but you are a city planning commissioner member, uh, make sure that you attend that meeting tonight. Laura, we didn't, you brought this up this morning, and I think it's, it's cool. So you want to just touch on the, on the city dog park?
So the county had a dog park that they were, um, in charge of over by the recycling center for many years. And we have, um, through an extremely collaborative, collaborative effort, we've now taken over the dog park. They were very, uh, wonderful to work with. They followed any requests that we had. They put up brand-new fencing. Um, in the entranceway, there was some concern about not being able to get our mowers in, and it would take a lot of time to weed whack, so they limestone the whole entranceway. They took down any of the elements inside that were deteriorating for us, and they left us, um, benches and a picnic table, and, um, and now it's our dog park. So we can provide that service for our community and continue to provide that for years to come.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Laura.
Yep.
Uh, anything else? I do want to just, uh, I'm actually going to be, you can't call it vacation when you're a retirement anymore, but I am going to be gone, uh, August eleventh through the twenty-first. So the second meeting, Paul Mayo, in August, I will be attending, uh, virtually. So if you could, hopefully you're here that day. So, all right, anybody else, anything else to go to the meeting? Sorry, I haven't been keeping up. Uh, we're down four-two.
That's better than three.
Motion. Motion by Hagan.
Thank you.
Motion by Peterson that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, again, say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at seven twenty-four PM.